On March seventeenth. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First guest Chuck from Environmental Partners, Lunti on Cedar, one A replacement well.
Just sit up.
Yeah, yeah. Won't even charge you for the seat.
Thank you. Yet I have to see the late last thing to print stuff home because my printer wasn't working at home and then I've got it to work. This is gonna be quick. I just wanted to, you know, obviously without the superintendent available, I just wanted to kind of present the bid schedule. Thank you. Yeah. For the Cedar Street project. As I had mentioned to Derek, the review process with Mass EP went really quick. I think I emailed you guys the letter. You have the letter right there. Everything's good. This is a pretty straightforward design. We've done several of them before. Plans are in, inspections are in good shape. So I just drafted this up for, you know, you to review. Let me know if you think that this is a good bid schedule for you and then we can coordinate with Tina to have this go on. You know, we'll probably have the pre-bid conference out at the site so the contractors are aware of site conditions and what we're trying to do there. Keith Black is actually gonna be running the job mainly. You've met him before. He's been to the water commissioners meeting. So he's slated to be out there for all of work. He'll be out there for, we're under contract to do site visits. He'll be out there for anything subgrade and then he'll check everything that goes on with the contractors out there. We'll monitor the shop drawings, make sure that everything is as specified. What, as you might recall, we're, Paul Less is gonna be working with us, we're teaming, and he's gonna do the skate appropriate and applications engineering for that. So we'll get him on the contract and have him involved in the bid phase and then hopefully we can execute a contract in May and probably be done with the project in about four months.
I was gonna say how much is the most good timeframe overall? Four months?
So how about us to the end of the year?
Yeah, we were anticipating that, that, you know, we'll have it on by Friday night screen. And then as far as, you know, the operations of things, you know, it'll be offline, the existing well from the fall through whenever it's done.
They act on a thirty-five gallons a minute, so it really is not. We won't be using, we wouldn't be using that well this summer much longer, would we? I'm just trying to figure.
Well, this summer they will, but I mean, by the time they take it offline, fall, we'll probably won't need it. So that'll be perfect timing actually. If we can get.
So we still have the use, we still have the use of it for the summer months in case we.
Yeah, because we tried developing it again one more last time and it's not, it's just not.
Yeah, I mean.
So it's not worth spending the money again.
Well, the nice thing about it too is that it rated for a lot higher than the new well and we can design, we designed it for one and a half times the the permitted capacity, so. So you just have to make sure that when it's operating that over the year time, you don't go over what the primitive rate is, but you can use it for a higher region some of the time. So I know I'm just presenting this to you now, so you guys can mull over this. If this is fine, then I'd be cordial with you with Tina to get the bid phase moving forward. Usually we do it electronically. We've put it on Project Dog and the contractors can get it there and then feel significant, so it's a more streamlined process.
I don't have this for a second, but when you have a chance, can you grab a copy of the plans?
Yeah.
And then maybe some point, can you, me and Greg just meet?
Sure.
That way I can just make sure that my phone and
Sure.
can just look over.
Absolutely.
Because I don't think he's seen these plans.
Yeah, I can email them to him too right now, so when I get back to the.
Well, I'd rather have a copy.
Yeah, I can do that.
If we can just sit down, me, you and Greg.
Sure.
That way he can, I wanna make sure that he's.
Yeah, and I want probably to have Keith there as well because he and Greg will be working.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay. Whenever, whenever you got a chance, we can just, because I mean, we have a while to go.
Yeah.
So I just wanna just run.
Yeah, no, and actually we can, you know, this gives us some time, you know, a couple of weeks' time that Greg can look over the drawings and we can meet. And Keith was actually gonna be here, but he's on vacation. So if he'll be back by Monday, we'll go in before us and sit down and get to it.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Because I'd rather do it in person with a hot copy. That way if we need to circle anything in the drawing or anything, just to make sure that we're all, because I don't know if Greg has seen the plans.
I, I, I know that we sent in the water main site drawings because he went out there with Keith and looked at where the, all the.
The tile on the inside of the street.
So yeah, I can schedule that as soon as Keith gets back and I'll email Greg.
So do we have to file anything else with the state when, when, oh, when we start construction or?
After construction is the abandonment of the existing well.
And is that, okay, so I'm guessing it's like decommissioning an elevator with the state? And it's kind of a pain in the butt or is that pretty streamlined process?
It is. It's pretty streamlined and they actually already reviewed, because we have in the contract documents how do you abandon the well, but it's actually the contractor that has to certify that.
So the contractor is decommissioning the well as, as well? Okay.
Right. So it's not that they'll be approving the process. It's just that the contractor has to certify that he did it the way that.
Okay.
So I can't remember. Were we taking that building down, the front building?
No, not on this job. Jeff did talk about that, but, you know, it wasn't what we scoped originally. So everything's gonna go through the second building. We have a pitless adapter and a submersible pump at the well and it'll just be mechanical piping going through there, so we can do the instruments.
So however they do the decommissions, concrete, fill it in, stolen, we're only gonna do a little capus.
Yeah, I think it's a bentonite seal somehow. But yeah, we can review that if you want.
All right, sounds like a plan. We'll just keep, hopefully we can get this thing done by January and that way next summer we can have.
Yeah, and I know, obviously, we talked about with the superintendent not being here, we can communicate by email with you guys and let you know on a weekly basis what's going on. But Keith will be the guy responsible and he'll, he'll do, you know, weekly reports and send stuff to.
Yeah, that's what we have in the other jobs that we do on this weekend, we do it.
And I'm always available. I mean, I'll be, I'll be there behind the scenes, but you know, I'll, I'll attend whatever meeting you want me to with you guys to bring it to speed. Keith will be the guy moving forward on the technical side. He did the design too, so. But yeah, we'll schedule something with Greg and.
Yeah, that way we can just make sure that everything's from top.
And we got, we got a little bit of time and even if, you know, we can always advertise on Project Dog and then we just have to by April twentieth, if, if we have any changes to the plans or specs from comments that you guys have, we can document by then.
All right, thanks.
We just have to go on combines too.
It, it has to go to the central register. The combines is more materials, but we'll take care of that for you. So actually, that's a good point. I didn't include that in here, so. But we, we take care of that anyway, but I'll, I'll forward all that information to you when we do.
On a separate note, I think, I know you had sent some stuff over, a couple of leads that we're working on, so. I think on our end, this would move forward with that.
That's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew the schedule and the deadline.
We saw a while, right?
Yeah, I guess the EPA, it's October twenty twenty-four, is that you have to have your service line inventory. And I don't think that you're gonna have too many leads. You might have some lead boots next. I don't know.
None.
None.
But I think Scott was saying something about galvanized. Something about you saying, well, galvanized, you have to kind of classify that differently maybe, if I'm not mistaken. And if you don't know, you have to say it's lead. Am I correct?
Well, it's just if it's an unknown, it's assumed lead. But if it's galvanized, if it's galvanized, you're fine. And I didn't anticipate that you guys would have it, but any, any lead services, but you just have to be able to document what you have. And it's not only, you know, like you guys are responsible from the corp to the curb stock, but you also have to define what it is from the curb stock to the house and then in the house too. So it's gonna have, what I would recommend and what we're recommending to our clients is that if somebody from the district could get into the basement and just take a picture and then you can show that it's copper, elastic, whatever.
While we were doing the meters.
Too late for that. We're already doing mountains, yeah.
So that, yeah, and that's unfortunate that, because what we're saying, like, we're working with Rent of Mass and they're putting their meters right now and I have instructed them and put their meters in to take pictures.
We'll have to, we're gonna be doing some hiring. We're gonna have to, something like that. I think we're gonna have to set up, set up a computer system. We'd have to do something as like a, something with cameras and that's gonna have to be, maybe be like a separate.
Yeah.
Because we can't, you know, there's no way. I talked to one of the Pride Commissioners that worked here last week and Scott did too. I mean, he's swearing that all through the years he was here, he never saw a piece of lead, so.
Yeah, and I wouldn't assume because of the, the system is, because really, lead was really used. Yeah, well, even before that, I think it was like fifties and before and then they started to move on. It's a, it was a great material at the time, just obviously didn't understand that it was not beneficial.
All right, we'll get to back in the houses and then eventually, I mean, that's what it is and they're requiring it. It's just another project that we have to, we'll have to work on after the meters are done.
And, you know, even though, if you guys have any questions about that and the regulations, just let me know. We were talking about, we come in and talk about this.
We can talk about that, like the meters and everything, because if we're still, if we talk a bunch of meters, we might as well start doing it now. Take the pictures of it. So if we have a couple hundred meters left, it saves us a little bit more time calling back. Or get the resin and take a picture of it.
I was gonna say, and have me email it to you.
Yeah, do that too.
Yeah.
That would be the best, that would be the best thing.
Yeah, if you can do that, that'd be the way to go, because then you don't have any potential liabilities with your guy.
All right, thanks for your time.
All right.
We'll work on it anyway. Whenever you have a chance, like you said, we got, we got a while to go, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it in the next couple of weeks. I'll talk to Keith and get back to you.
Okay, cool.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Good, thanks. Approve the minutes of the Pride Meetings. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February ninth board meeting?
So moved.
I'll step down a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. Reading of correspondence. Julie.
You doing? You bring copies for everybody?
All right, Julie Raffaro, eighteen fifteen Wheeler Street, North Dayton, February twenty-seventh. Attention Commissioners, I hereby petition the Board of Water Commissioners to accept my property back into the Dayton Water District. I, Julie Raffaro, owner of the real estate located at eighteen fifteen Wheeler Street in the town of Dayton, Mass, registered deeds book two-two-zero-seven-one, page two-eighty-two, area one-point-five-nine-eight. Dayton Assessors Map zero-zero-two dot zero, Lot Block zero-one-two-nine, Lot zero-zero-zero-zero dot zero. Would like to petition the Board of Commissioners and the voters of the Dayton Water District for lawful acceptance of the real estate of said street into the territory of Dayton Water District in accordance with provisions of Section thirteen, Chapter three fifty-nine of the Act of nineteen fifty. Please send me written notification of your acceptance to reconcile this matter. Also include any credits to my account for overcharges of this matter.
So I, I refer to our annual, because it has to go.
Okay. So they're already tied into the, they're already tied into us. We just don't, we haven't billed.
She's getting billed the out-of-district rate.
Gotcha.
So this brings her into the district. She'll be taxed with the low water rate.
Okay.
But we have to go to an annual special meeting and have the district vote on it to bring it back in.
One out of thirty-five?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I think.
Hopefully get some help. Okay, perfect. The financial conditions.
Real, uh, real quick on this, but they, what's the, the overages, the overcharges? What was?
There isn't.
There is not?
There's charges. She just got the higher rate, so. I don't know. I thought she was gonna give me that, but.
Financial conditions, the operating budget to actual balances, income for the first eight months of fiscal twenty twenty-three is two million six hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty, the expenses at two million three hundred and four thousand five hundred and nine. Outstanding water receivables as of February twenty-eighth is two hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six. The month's commitments are twenty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-six and the water receivables for the month were two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine. Is there a motion to accept the financial reports as presented?
So moved.
Step down a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. Is there a motion to approve the expenditure of warrants as presented?
So moved.
Step down a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. Full business, the Somerset Brooks well update, Somerset Water Brook Street well update. There is no update right now. The MIU repair update, roughly nine hundred and sixty meters completed. It's six hundred and thirty MIUs that still need to be changed out. An additional three hundred and eleven analog meters that need to be upgraded to the next to a digital meter.
How many more? Sorry.
Six hundred and thirty left. An additional three eleven analog, which is the original, original ones.
So another nine hundred left, give or take?
About eight hundred and forty-one.
They did a great job when they replaced mine.
Did they also? Yeah.
I had to move a little bit of furniture out of the way and all that good stuff, but yeah, they did good.
All right, Main Street Water Project, they're on schedule, like four months ahead of schedule. I talked to Nick yesterday. They had seven house services left. They're waiting for National Grid to hold one of the poles, which is my fault. And they are doing temporary tie-ins over the culverts with six-inch bypasses. So we don't have any still water in the new pipe. So once they complete the six-inch bypasses over the three culverts, then they can tie in Elm Street tank with the new main. So Woodard and Carin made sure with the water flow, the inch bypasses were.
Sufficient, yeah.
And they say it's enough to keep the tank running, so.
So what's up with the culvert, underneath the culvert work?
So the culvert work is not going that well. So Z Notton is, from what I'm hearing, is that they're, the contractor that's bid on it the first time doesn't wanna comply with Woodard and Carin's request as far as all the paperwork. So they're kind of backpedaling because Woodard and Carin is requiring a whole bunch of paperwork and statistics and all of this stuff. And from what I'm hearing, the second culvert, they have to go down fourteen feet. So between de-watering and all this other, because they have to de-water it all while they're doing all this work. So I really don't have any more information other than that. That's, they're kind of figuring out what to do still at this point. So of course, you know, they didn't really prepare for this. Thought they would go around it like they wanted to in the beginning, so.
So, yeah, even though the bid document said go underneath, correct?
So I mean, we, we're covered. The engineers are covered. Z Notton has to do it, so whatever they have to do as far as they get the contractor in here to do it, then. But once all this paperwork gets done, then they have to schedule actually doing it, so. And that's why I've been screaming about making sure they get a bypassing so that we don't have any still water.
Right.
So that's where we stand on the three culvert crossings. So in the meantime, getting the rest of the water services done, once they get the bypasses in, they'll tie in Cedar, uh, tie in Elm Street with the tank. They have to tie in the hydrant down there at, I, uh, RCI, the one that's in the woods. Still gonna tie that in in case they need it for that one. The fire station has the new hydrant, oh, in front of the fire station, the way they monitored it. Tom Ferry's gonna put a Ballard on the other side of the fire hydrant. Tom's gonna take care of that for us. Because they're afraid of the ambulance. One of the kids cuts the cord, they're too short. They're gonna rip the whole bottom of the ambulance off, so we'll put Ballard there. And I don't know if they did, it was supposed to, when did we have the storm? Last Tuesday or this week? This week. They were supposed to do the Somerset tie-in on Tuesday.
Oh, I think they did it yesterday.
Okay, so it was done yesterday. They were supposed to do the, the tie-in with Somerset. So hopefully that's done. I didn't, I didn't talk to Nick yesterday, so that part's done. So.
Anything with the road? With, with fixing the, fixing that?
I don't know what we're gonna do about that. No, I don't know. Tom put up the sign saying travel at your own risk, which he agreed that that should have went up months ago, but I don't know.
Have people still complained?
No, it's just a hard show.
I get a couple complaints, yeah.
I don't, I don't know how we're. I'll call Nick as soon as we're done here before you leave.
Because I haven't, you know, we haven't had.
It's the bottom part that's horrible right now. The top part's kind of tolerable.
Yeah.
More than the bottom.
I got a little trick for you. The faster you go, the less you feel the bumps.
Okay. We'll do that later, okay? So that's all I have on the Main Street. Superintendent's position, special district needing, we have to discuss.
So you don't have anybody up the superintendent?
No, we're not rushing.
Okay. I hear it's doing a good job.
Everybody is. We're, we're taking care of this place. They're taking care of the meters. We got the guys up here filling in doing some meters. We had to take Scott off the meters to do some paperwork for the DEP. We're, we're doing fine right now.
Running like a old machine.
Yeah. So Tina's taking care of the office. My phone calls every day. We're doing all right. New business, the annual district meeting, draft budget and warrant to review.
When is that, maybe?
May twenty-fifth.
Oh, no, no, it says special. Is that it? Oh, is that the same?
I'm gonna do it in March, but at this point, maybe just before.
Yeah, we were trying to do a little earlier, but that's not, it's very rough. So just use it. Yeah, we're just gonna, right before the annual. Right, so we're gonna review that. The antenna, AT&amp;T antenna lease agreement, First Amendment.
I saw, I read that.
We discussed it in our previous.
Yeah, I read the last night.
Put it together.
Yeah. All right, view a motion. Is there a motion to have the district council, Matt Costa, review the AT&amp;T First Amendment of the antenna lease? So many Elm Street, so I'm gonna step down a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. All right, you need, you don't need this whole draft, right? All right, drinking water system disinfection by the byproduct compliance evaluation. All right, so we had a, so we're having some problems out in the field down at the north end, down near the Elm Street tank. We have some THM issues that are getting worse over the years. And it's getting to the point where if we don't do anything about it, we're gonna start having some problems with compliance. So we have to, by the state, do some evaluation of THMs before it gets to a point where it's, we're not in compliance. So it's a fee of forty-five thousand dollars to do this fee that the state is, they're basically mandating it because we're getting at the point where we have to. We just did our last test three weeks ago, four weeks ago. We're having a problem more in the summertime than the wintertime. We passed the winter with the flying colors, but it's the summertime test that we're having a problem with. The mains, the main, the new main on Main Street will probably help, but it's more toward the tank issue than the biting issue.
What causes that? It's a chemical chloride, isn't it?
So it's a byproduct of too much chlorine. So when you have a residual, so from what I'm understanding is obviously the chlorine attacks the bacteria. But if you have too much residual of the leftover chlorine, it turns into THMs.
Stagnants, yeah.
So it's the, so it's a balance between not getting a bacteria hit and having, keeping a THM low, so it's all constant balance. And we're not balancing it right. It's not being balanced right because we're trying to.
Do you have a filter or?
No, it's a, it's an out in the field issue. Because they're fine here and okay at the Williams Street, but when it gets down to that part of town.
Need a system.
And when you have water that's not being moved enough with, can't say overchlorinating, but if you chlorinate to keep the bacteria down, then the byproduct of that is THMs. So that's kind of a, and they can see the trend now that we have. So Scott's been for the last three, four years documenting fire reports and putting everything into kind of one central location where we can see the years now of the trends. This is what he's been working on for the last few years. We can see the trend in some of the engineers that the trend is getting worse, especially in the summertime. So we're at the point now where the state is saying, okay, you guys need to figure something out. Just try to straighten this out before we get into other towns, because other towns in our area are having massive, massive THM issues that they can't solve. And a lot of it is water that's not being moved enough. But to make the water move, you have to dump it to waste. Then the state comes back and says, okay, you guys are dumping too much, because you can't waste the water, because obviously you're wasting it and with, you guys are short on water automatically and if we have drought. So it's like this compiling of problems and this is what. So this is the first stage of the, trying to figure out the issue is, um, and we're on a deadline to get this done, so we have to proceed with it now. So. So is there a motion to accept the drinking water system disinfection by product compliance evaluation proposal submitted by Woodard and Carin? So moved. I'll step down a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. There's no place to sign, I think.
No.
You just signed it?
Yeah, and I'll ask, yes, and I'll ask.
Next regular meeting, we're wanting to talk about that because who knows? The annual election of the Water Commissioners of the Dayton Water District for the term of three years will be held on Monday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, from twelve to seven P M at the Dayton Water District Treatment Facility located at one ninety-two Williams Street, North Dayton. Anyone wishing to be placed on the ballot must fill out a request to be placed on the ballot.
By when?
At the Dayton Water District.
What's the, what's the deadline to fill out a ballot to put your name on?
Beginning March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Deadline is April tenth.
April tenth.
The Dayton District Annual Meeting will be May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M at the Dayton Middle School Cafeteria. I'll put them up.
Two things. I heard Chuck talk about pipes and inspection. Remember that you talked about taking pictures? I'm wondering if Jimmy Aggie on the building, you know, all this doing right, they have to go over it. I wonder if there'd be any indication on the program, sort of seeing you guys some trips.
Well, I think the best thing we should do is try to figure out what year that they changed the plastic. So once, once we changed the plastic.
But the main's coming in.
A copper though.
Correct. Coming into the house and that's where they want to take the picture. They wouldn't have any plastic in the house.
Yeah, all the new services are plastic. My house is plastic.
Oh, is it? It's not copper?
No. Also, my house, there was a certain, they cut off copper to plastic at a certain year.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have to figure out years of what went, when. Because I think like, let's just say my house is built in ninety-two, so from ninety-two to now, there's no more copper. So we could X-ray all those houses from ninety-two to now, because your house should be copper.
Uh, plastic. No, mine's copper. In the house, right there, it comes in from the,
Sure.
in, right into my house, if the meter is copper.
All right, well, I can roll that. All right, so we're gonna figure this out then. All right, I thought they were all plastic.
I think this seems crazy to have to go and do all that.
I agree.
It's compliance, it's lead.
Right, no, no, man, but are they giving you any money to do that?
No.
Of course not.
No, they do that. No, that's what I'm saying. We just juggle all day long. That's all we do is juggle.
How do we survive all these years?
Well, it's not easy. Well, a lot of them, but then they never had all these compliances. That's the thing. Half of the stuff that we're doing now, they never had before. They didn't, none of this. But it's coming so fast now. That's what I'm saying, like, all these new compliance things are coming so fast that they, we can't even. that we can't even handle what we had, never mind having a problem all day like the meters. We didn't have a meter.
Transfer station, twenty-two pages of landings.
Yeah.
That's why we formed a solid waste committee, because we couldn't afford to hire another guy to meet all the issues.
It's awful. It's absolutely awful. And between the engineers, and I'm not talking bad about the engineers, but you know, everything has to be engineered at the cost of just.
Just to get a report done.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's dollars, it's tens of thousands of dollars every single time that we need and think about even starting to do the work. I mean, this, this is just the compliance, the forty-five grand, just, just to tell us what we need to do. They could come back and say, okay, you needed to spend ten million dollars. So, all right, all right, we'll figure out, let, let's, we'll, we'll do that. I'll talk to Scott and, and figure out if there's, if we can just do it by the year, if Jason's, I could be wrong, if this is copper or if they develop a copper instead of plastic, I don't. But I know that Dorian told me, my house is plastic, they started running plastic so many years ago and then.
So in the, into your house at the meter, plastic.
All the way from Center Street, five hundred, six hundred feet to my house is plastic, yeah.
And into your house?
Yeah.
It's like the alinized.
My straight up copper.
All right, all right, we'll figure that out.
And then the other thing is, um, having seven A M meetings has drawn some criticism from district voters. Let you know. Especially where you got election covered.
They're going to have to get over it because my schedule and Jason's schedule and Eric's not here, but he couldn't even do it, so.
Okay.
They can't all be at night, so we, there's not May, is it?
I'll be, I, I, it's not me.
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine.
I'm just passing on.
Whatever.
Okay.
We try to have them in the evenings.
I enjoy working with you guys. I want to continue to work with you guys.
We, we try to have them in the evenings and I, I'll, I'll be the first one to say this, this past meeting was the one that I had to reschedule twice because of my work schedule, my, my main work schedule, but, uh, this is a, we've done this, what, once in the last?
I think we've done it once.
Once, maybe twice before in the, in the four years, three years I've been here, so.
I don't know any.
Um, if anyone has any issues, they can reach out to us, but it's not a, it's not a common occurrence, let's put it that way. It's just trying to get.
Getting everybody happy, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We'll do our best. If it was, if it was every month, Mr. Hall, then definitely I could, I could see them being upset.
Okay, I, I would say that it won't be, you know, this is not going to be a May.
I think this is the second time in four years since I've been here that we've done that, that I've done this.
It was necessary to have the meeting.
Yep, because of Woodard and Carin, yep, with the well update. Uh, sorry, environmental partners, I get them mixed up.
All right. Anything else?
I'm all set.
Is there a motion to go into executive session under provisions, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A eight, to discuss superintendent's position?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. We will not be coming back into open session.